Welcome everyone to the USA Water Polo Ratio Equity Reform Final Report Town Hall. Quick housekeeping announcement, if you have any questions, please use the Q and A function. And once we give our report, we will try to get through all of your questions. So be patient with us. I want to start off by thinking giving a big shout out and thanking every member of the task force for saying yes to this big ask. And leaning in with an open mind and open heart into this tough work. John Abdo and I as co-chairs intentionally set out to select this all-star group with geographical, demographical lenses. Because we wanted to bring as many voices to the table as possible to help us get through this deep dive that we were hoping to make into our sport after, if we all remember, right? We came together after a double pandemic of the COVID-19 virus and a summer of violence that brought forward, you know, and amplified the continued racial inequities in American society, which forced us to take a look at our own sport, which is also plagued with these inequities. So together we brought in many BIPOC members and different stakeholders together. And we had a lot of different members of USA Water Polo come forward and share awful stories about not feeling welcome. And we all care, right? So we lifted our hands and we wanted to make sure that we could make the sport a little more inclusive with this deep dive. So that's what we set out to do for the past two years. And John will now kind of get us through the 12 recommendations that we were able to put together after a lot of Zoom meetings, a lot of training together, a lot of deep discussions, a lot of modeling that you'll hear from Mariko after John. So really it has been a tremendous honor and it was humbling to be together in a room with so many great people of our task force. So I just want to say thank you once again to them and thank you to USA Water Polo for giving us this, the space and the resources to get together to, to help make our sport a little more inclusive. So pass it on to John now.
Big thank you to the board of directors, to the USA Water Polo staff, USA Water Polo staff that's on this call. Just another reintroduction, right? We should all know who my co-chair Brenda Villa is on this, one of the greatest water polo players of all time, four-time Olympian, four-time medalist in the Olympics. And so leading this with her, grateful for her efforts. Our lead admin on this, Maya Lamb was with us from the start, pushing, pushing all this through. She'll help monitor any of the Q and A that Brenda referred to, right? As it's coming and, and our, you know, I've been calling her MVP, most valuable player that's come through this, but Monica Rooks. We all got to know each other and meet each other in this kind of time of crisis that Brenda referred to in the summer of 2020. And to nurture that relationship and her time at Yale and now graduating and now out. Looking forward to her hearing and for you all to be able to see some of the work that she's been able to do and, and, and share with you all that's going through that. So again, thank you to everybody. Another task force, one of our task force members, Scott Newberger is also on this, on this call as well. So just a big shout out to him and hoping you'll see some of this work in the future again. So, you know, without, without further ado, we really are very proud of the work we put in. It was two years of many, many Zoom meetings, many, much work off, off, off-site together, work, working, bringing it back together to show you what inevitably became our final report. And then also recommendations to our, to the USA Water Polo Board of Directors. And then what you'll hear from Mariko and us at the end is a call to action from the community of what, how you all can get involved and to continue this work in your own communities and where you are at. So where you can find this on the website and I'll begin to share my screen now is, one second while I do that, well, if you go to the USA Water Polo website right now and you were there, and this is the front page of our website now, and you clicked about over here and you could see a link to diversity, equity and inclusion. If you click, you click on that link and it'll take you to a place where our final report sits. Again, another good look here at the task force that we are so grateful for and for their work that they did has links to a lot of the stuff that we did in the past, but at the very, very top where we'd love you to, to take a look at is the task force final report. And so within that final report, you're going to be able to find, you know, everything that we started from the beginning, an overview of the work that we did, why we got started, why there was a call to action, the vision, the kind of our guiding principles within the task force, there were subgroup committees, policies and procedures, as you can see, education and training, research partnerships, access, which is our number one overriding goal in all this is how to create access for everybody and make our sport more inclusive. And then we start getting into the research and the, and the back, and the back work that happened. As you get to the end, you will find links to a lot of the things that we did, including our education, the recommendations, which I go over now. And some of the, some of the research and the very long research and in-depth research that Mariko and her team led. And you can get access to all of that here. So please take a look, share widely, share within your communities where you can find. I'm going to focus here very carefully on the recommendations from the task force. So in October of 2021, so last year at this time, these recommendations came forth in our board of directors, which, which Brenda Villa is on, our Water Polo Board of Directors unanimously approved these recommendations. So it's now time for us to take these recommendations as a staff community and start implementing them everywhere we are at in all that we are doing. And so the first recommendation in from the task force report was creating a diversity equity. So there's a now that USA Water Polo that you go to and see your funds and the money that you to US Water Polo specifically go towards DEI programming and our efforts and everything that we're, that we're doing. So even further, and I apologize if my internet is cutting out a little bit here, I'll, I'll jump off video for a second, see if that helps. But in that fund, the DEI fund that we have started, it is our number one leading fund in our fundraising of any designated fund that we have. Even at its start, we had a brand new, almost 80, in the very first month, 80 brand new donors to USA Water Polo on that fund, people who had never done anything to USA Water Polo before, showing that they care about these efforts right away. And we've had some major, major gifts come through recently through this. And so having this DEI fund, a place where people can show, show how much they care about this work and where they're going has been incredibly successful. In our current code of policy, recommendation number two, we now have a zero tolerance policy on any sort of discrimination at USA Water Polo in any of our sanctioned events, national events and anything that we do, if you go to our code of conduct, you'll be able to find that. You'll find that zero, zero tolerance policy that we developed, our policies and procedures group developed. To uphold that, that policy and that zero tolerance policy, we are going to have a, be looking for at least one to two people who will be operating as ombudsmen's. And this ombudsman position will be there to help our, and help any discrimination issues that come through to you at USA Water Polo. Currently at USA Water Polo, there's a grievance process where if you have any issues with member clubs or any issues, you can file but within our, this task force, we have found that having a buzz position that can help arbitrate some of the issues that can come up in discrimination where we can use them as teaching opportunities. Right? And so you can, as you read through the report, you'll see some of the qualities we're looking for in an ombuds and where we can maybe help see and recognize that some of these need to go through the process. And that we can work through outside of that. And if issues do become legal matters or law enforcement needs to get involved, or they do require the grievance process, then we will use those, use that as a, as a tool. But this is maybe a way for us to, to, to deal with any of these issues upfront. Recommendation number four is we now have DEI recognition in our USA Water Polo National Awards. We've titled the awards after Brenda Villa. So there's a Brenda Villa award that you're, that you can nominate within your zone when the national awards amount. And this is to recognize individuals and clubs who are working on this in their, in their area. And so I hope you recognize those people who are doing the work with those. Recommendation number five, and you can grow all the details, I'll try to get through it quick, but you can go through all the details in the report. Recommendation number five is to work on our SHIELDy memberships currently at USA Water Polo. And for over the last, you know, as long as I know, 15 years or so, we have a member called the SHIELDy membership where people who receive lunch at school can apply and get a discounted gold medal to, to USA Water Polo. In that, in that membership, we wanted to deeper dive right into that look and take into what other ways we can make that SHIELDy membership more accessible to people and not, and not use the current criteria to make that happen. Reaction number six, our community program, Mariko is going to go through this all when she, when she starts her, her talking here in a couple of minutes. You can hear all the programs that we worked in Connecticut and have been moved on. Now you'll be able to see from that pilot program what you can do in your areas to replicate this. We had recommendation seven, we had USA Water Polo Training that Task Force Number Clark Weatherspoon and his education group helped lead our USA Water Polo staff through some staff training. And that training now will then move from just being from USA, how we can move that into coach education, how we can move that into membership education and outreach. Same with that, that led me right into recommendation number eight. Not only are we going to have consistent training for our staff, but also for our members and creating that awareness in, in our training and education. Recommendation number nine from the task force is to also help create a, or adaptive water polo. If we want to be an inclusive race is not the only criteria where we need to be more inclusive in our sport category. We can become more accessible on the adaptive level. So asking for and looking for more help and research in the support to help create adaptive water polo in our programming. And the final recommendation number 10 is starting to work on our train, finishing and our transgender membership participation policy. And we have through the help of the DEI fund and through the help of some support here, we've been able to negotiate and get help from a, a new transgender consultant. And be able to announce that shortly where we can get some help and now develop this policy. Hopefully by January 1st, here at USA Water Polo, we have a policy in place that can be inclusive to all people looking to participate in our sport. And this is a, something else that's really important. And just a final quote that you see there on the bottom, that talent is equally distributed, but opportunity is not. And that's been our number one goal of this task force is how we can be more inclusive, how we can create opportunities for all, not just for some. And in just in short, these are the 10 recommendations again, that you can find online. You'll find them again under diversity, equity, inclusion with our recommendations at the end of this final report. And you get as much as time as you can spend on this, it will be valuable if you're a club administrator, if you're a leader anywhere in your, in this sport, please share widely into your members and bring their attention to this as we try to again, put ourselves in a position where we can be more inclusive and bring more people in our sport. And I think the most important thing, the last thing I'll say, Mariko, before she dives into our specific programming recommendation that we had here is that the goal is that this is a legacy that lives on forever. These are sustainable things that can work to change the system that we operate under, that can help change how we operate moving forward in our sport. It's not a one-off, it's not a, something that a one-off clinic or a one-off piece of work. These are the things that can create the systems that can help shape equitable work in the future. And so very proud of that. And so please, please again, take a look and we'll be able to answer any questions as we go along here. But I'm going to hand it over to, to Mariko to talk about our pilot program and all the great research and her team and worked it.
Thank you so much for that, John, and thank you, John and Brenda and everyone on the task force for all the work that you've done over the past two years. I'm a relatively new kid on the block, so I'll take a couple of seconds to introduce myself. My name is Mariko. I graduated from Yale twice, actually, once in 2021 with my bachelor's degree and again in 2022 with a master's in public health. And most of the work that I do focuses on the intersection between race and public health and specifically how we can get public health interventions to communities who are being systematically denied access to resources. So when, and I also played on Yale's Water Polo team. So when the opportunity to join the task force came up, it seemed like a pretty good fit. And so what the research team focused on within the context of the task force was one, sort of assessing where are we now? And two, figuring out where do we want to go? And how do we make sure that any of the steps that we're taking to increase water safety through introductory water polo in communities of color to provide more opportunities just generally for folks to be able to, you know, play the sport, engage in our community. We really were focused on having that being data-driven, having that being, and for us, that means being community-driven in terms of the voices that are in the room and how we're able to operationalize that going forward when it comes to programming. So we're going to talk a little bit about some of the work that we've been able to do. And it's been pretty really exciting stuff in terms of how we've been able to bring water polo to new audiences and really seeing both from just a, we get to show people more water polo, but also from a safety and health perspective, how much of an impact we've already been able to make just with one program. And so I'll talk a little bit at the, at the end, but one of the biggest goals of the task force is to be able to expand this programming. And we would love for everyone who is watching this and who is potentially interested in bringing this to their communities to continue this conversation long after we are done talking on Zoom. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen and we'll just sort of walk through the program model that we've created and how we've been able to apply it in communities so far. And so the sort of overarching program that we've been working on is a model called Equity Flows or Equity that furthers opportunities in water safety. Because I think when we talk about expanding water polo, one of the biggest comments that we've gotten from everyone is, you know, well, I want to start a new club or I want to bring water polo into sort of local parks and rec in my community, but it's really hard to make a case for starting water polo versus starting other sports. And we really want to figure out how to get resources and both financial and capital to water polo programming and billing it as not just about children's youth and recreation, which is already in of itself important and has a lot of health impacts with billing, billing it as a survival skill that we can teach children that will, you know, be carried with them for the rest of their lives, particularly in these communities where drowning is higher because of lack of systemic access to sports like water polo gives us a, an additional layer of making a case for why we should be expanding water polo and why our sport is so important. And so our goals, right, are to address racial disparities in aquatics access and in drowning and to grow water polo in new communities. And so how we're going to teach safety and skills through introductory water polo and focus on BI PSC and low-income communities. And so the way that we started out building this was through using very different research methods. The first was community forums, so asking folks who are primarily BI PSC within water polo communities, what they have seen systemically and individually, what they've experienced, what they want changed, what future they envision for water polo. And so we led different guided exercises with different groups of stakeholders to just get a sense of where we are internally as a water polo community. We also used data from previous town hall meetings, including another one that was posted a couple of, oh wow, almost a year and a half ago at this point, that allowed folks to come in and address, you know, what concerns they had, what questions they had about racial equity and water flow going forward. We also did some good old fashioned literature reviews where we looked at the work that other incredible people have already done on water polo, on aquatic sports, on health, on sort of systemic geography and, you know, different barriers to physical activity. And we also conducted our own evaluation and feedback of our programming. So this is always sort of evolving and, you know, keeps getting, we're hopefully better with each generation. And so the way that we, so the, the model that we sort of come up with is, is this, right? We have USA Water Polo focuses on developing programming and packaging. So we have oversight, we have funding through the DEI fund that John talked about. We have evaluations so we can figure out, you know, when it comes to whatever stakeholders you might have in your community, whoever owns the pool, whatever sort of city or local officials that you can give them numbers so we can explain exactly what we're doing and how we're doing it, publicity and programming opportunities. And we work with both community organizations, so youth programs, schools, parks and recs that have existing needs and also existing resources that encourages community buy-in because they often have folks that they're already working with to serve the needs of specific communities. And it avoids some of the saviorism model of sort of, we're just coming in here and we're just going to tell you what to do. And this is the thing that you need and allows communities to state, you know, this is what we're looking for and this, this is what would fit best with us. And we pair those community organizations with local aquatic affiliates. So water polo clubs, often USA clubs or individuals or organizations that are already existing in the area. And those organizations provide staffing, sometimes material needs like balls or goals and also community connections as well. And in addition to USA funding, we can also look for, and this is where USA Water Polo as a grant organization can help you, if you're interested, independent program or location-based grants and sponsorship. So for the programming that we're talking about today, we'd like to thank the New England Public Health Training Center and Yale's Richter Scholarship for giving us some of the startup funding that was used to launch this program and get it off the ground. And so what we focus on is sort of innovative and flexible program design. We recognize that anywhere that you're interested in maybe starting up some water polo programming for a new community might have different needs or different, you know, different requirements based on full-time, based on staffing, based on who the kids are. And so we want to make sure that from a day-to-day standpoint, you know, your program can be as successful as possible while also producing data that allows us to look at things at a national level. And so we really focus on five curriculum cornerstone. First three are hard skills, so basic water competence as defined by the Red Cross. So things like floating, being able to put your head underwater, being able to locate the floor and the wall and the lane line, head up freestyle and treading. The fourth thing we focus on is water polo game skills. So, you know, can you pass a ball? Do you understand shooting offensive, defensive positions, basic strategy, that kind of stuff? And the last thing is exposure and education and representation in education. And so we primarily focus on exposure to high-level BI PSC players who look like us because we understand from both research and also personal experience that having someone you can look up to within your sport can make a huge difference in encouraging kids to stay involved. And so connecting folks via Zoom or in-person visits and also learning via USA Water Polo teaching materials that we're developing. And so I know Brenda had the pleasure of getting to meet a lot of our kids in the New Haven program. And a lot of them said that that was one of their favorite parts of the program that summer. And so when we also are sort of pitching these programs, we're thinking, why water polo? And the two things that you can sort of take, if there are people who are, you know, you're trying to convince that this is programming is a good idea. The first is that there's improved water safety compared to traditional swimming lessons, things like treading, head-up swimming and rapid response to stimulus in an aquatic environment, I think, are much more par for the course for anyone who's played a water polo game versus if you're just swimming back and forth, right? And that also that there's going to be improved accessibility engagement, especially for communities where there might be a longstanding fear of water or for kids who haven't been exposed to water before. Having a more competitive and team-based ball and scoring framework that's similar to sports like soccer or basketball can make the water seem like a more accessible and less scary place, which is really important when you're trying to get kids comfortable with something that might be completely new to them. And also in terms of staff opportunities, this isn't just an opportunity for the kids who are learning how to play water polo or if you're getting sort of unfolded into a larger community. But also when we draw from existing USA Water Polo clubs and local aquatics initiatives and organizations, kids and young adults are given the opportunity to develop diversity, equity and inclusion skills, intervention skills, leadership skills, evaluation skills, data collection skills, and can use this either as, you know, just a great starting point in terms of internship or resume building or as, and, and we've seen this in New Haven a lot, a way to fulfill their high school graduation requirements for community service. And so the next thing that we focus on is a thorough but simple evaluation process. And so I won't get into too much detail about this, but basically using the skill goals that we described a couple of slides ago, we can sort of holistically rank participants who go through any kind of programming, be it a summer program, a year-long program, a month-long program in terms of their relative overall sort of skill level and competence. And then once we have numbers that are assigned to the kids' overall performance, we can then do some cool data work with those numbers to see how much people have maybe improved. And so our program in New Haven was six weeks long. We had 61 total kids and we tracked all of them throughout those six weeks in summer 2021. They just wrapped up summer 2022, so I'll have more things to say about that in about a month when we look at some of our numbers. But that is the data that we're going to look at today. And so we see that in 2021, when we started out, we had most of our kids at the beginner or intermediate beginner levels. We only had one kid who was advanced and that was because she was already doing synchronized swimming. But we can see that between week one and week six, we have a huge shift between what, between the number of kids that are beginner and the number of kids that are advanced. And so then when you run some statistical analysis on this, we actually see about a 200% increase in the overall mean or average score of the participants from week one to week six. And if you run some more statistical analysis, you see that that's what we call significant, which means that, you know, this is probably not due to chance. And in terms of retention, we also saw that about 20% of the total New Haven participants joined their local USA Water Polo club for the fall 2021 season, which resulted in about a 50% increase for the overall number of members that were in that club. Bearing in mind, right, when we focus our programming on regions that we already want to grow the game in regions like the Northeast, like New Haven, Connecticut, that we're sort of really engaging two birds with one stone because we are able to grow the game and do so equitably. And so, yeah, we saw that, you know, at the end of the day, over a third of all the fall season players for the local New Haven club were flows alumni, alumni of this six-week summer program. Okay. And so the last thing is sort of how to get involved. If you are, if you care about diversity and equity in water polo and you want to be able to do something about it, you know, I think that was one of the biggest questions that we received at our first town hall meeting. We now have some very concrete ways to be able to do that if you're interested in potentially bringing programming and bringing water polo opportunities to people around the United States who maybe don't have the chance to do so right now. And so the first is that you can submit a grant application via our website or refer an organization to our grant application site. And if you have trouble or you have questions about how to submit a grant application, you can always email our email, which I'll show on the next slide, and we can help you and do whatever you need to fill out the grant application materials so that you can ensure that you're submitting a proposal that'll be accepted. And then we will help you, once you get accepted, with pretty much any logistical things that you need. And so the second thing is you can email us just directly if you're like, I don't have a particular organization or a particular program in mind, but this is something I'm interested and passionate about. And I'd love to be kept in the loop about further opportunities in my area. You can just email us and tell us about yourself and say, hey, I'm a high school club coach. I've had this many years of experience. I can, you know, contribute maybe four or five hours of additional coaching per week. If there is a program that is in my area that might need some help. And we have a roster of those folks who might be interested in, and we can connect you with opportunities in your area. And the third is share and broadcast all of the information that we're letting you know today because you never know who might stumble upon it and realize that this is a great opportunity for them. And so, yeah, I would really suggest being, you know, if you can take any of these three steps, I think that goes a long way in being able to make sure that water polo can reach everyone in a fair and equitable way. And so to do any of that, feel free to email us at equitytfmembers@usawaterpolo.org. I will probably be the one who's receiving your emails because for the time being, I will be responsible for making sure that anyone who's interested in applying for a grant to do equity-based introductory water polo programming has all the resources and support that they need. So whether it's developing their curriculum, whether it's developing evaluation, whether it's recruiting staff, recruiting participants. I lend all of the sort of collective resources and abilities of our team to your disposal. Even though the task force is no longer meeting regularly, we're still incredibly committed to the work, as is USA Water Polo as an organization. And so if you're interested in furthering that work, And so if you're interested in furthering that work in your own community, please look no further than this email address. And feel free to uh give us, give us an email and ask any questions that you might have. As you may be prepared to do some programming in your own community. So thank you so much for taking the time to listen. And if you have any questions, folks who are live, feel free to put them in the Q and A. And folks who are watching this recorded later, we also have the email for that. So thank you so much, everyone, for the opportunity. It's been such a wonderful time to be able to see so much water polo um be expanded in communities like mine. And I can't wait for the future of the sport and for what we're doing here.
Thanks, Marco. Um again, for everybody who is watching, you can, you can see why we refer to her as the M V P uh in this group and why she uh. Uh led such meaningful um action and data driven research back uh and not just um, you know, so something that is uh, you know, for, for. Uh what's the word I'm looking for here? Um uh this is not for show, right? This is, this is, this is, this is something that's going to have some deep and long impact, right, into what we're doing. And again, being data driven and research based and everything that we're doing. So I think this is uh uh really inspiring to hear again. I just want to highlight two, three things again, if you have questions, please, please let us know. But a couple of things that uh Marco referenced, I think are really important to hear. One is that the direct tie for this work with water safety, right? I think it's really important for everybody to hear because from the beginning of this task force, we talked about this being in response to um the summer of twenty twenty. But it's also in response to the fact that, you know, the statistics tell us that over fifty percent of Americans do not know how to swim. So on a base level, over fifty percent of people in our country don't know how to swim. And then within that percentage, that fifty two percent, fifty three percent of Americans do not how to, do not know how to swim. There's a disproportionate amount of people of color who are affected by that, right? So the disproportionate number of those people who do not know how to swim are in communities of color or people of color. And that is based on a history of systemic racism, systemic exclusion, violent exclusion from the water that uh Marco was alluding to in in what she's doing in the research. And so what's really important to recognize is that we now as water polo community, as USA Water Polo, as as partner organizations within USA Water Polo Clubs. Uh and a couple of other organizations I'll mention here in a second, we can all help directly affect that water safety number. And can we lower the number of drownings in our area? Can we lower the number, uh can we increase the number of water safe people in our, in our communities? And we can do that through water polo. Uh and I think that's a really, really profound thing for our water polo community to do because it's not necessarily something we've done a lot of in the past, right? So can we, how can we all spread this knowledge of water safety uh in in the work that we do? And get, make people more comfortable, more safe and more welcome in the water. And again, affect, you know, directly affect the public health crisis of drownings, um which is, you know, related to the people not knowing how to swim. And so I think that's really, really important for for everyone to see within that work organization. So we are obviously representing USA Water Polo today and the task force and Marco's work now will continue with the task force that she alluded to. She'll continue to work with us uh at USA Water Polo and within communities and work, work alongside of you. Couple of other organizations, I'll mention three that are doing this work as well. Our co-chair, um Brenda Via started the Brenda Via Foundation during the same time. So there's a Brenda Via Foundation that 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 she has started um that is working uh alongside the same work. Uh we have been partnering and working with Diversity in Aquatics, uh which is a national organization uh who's committed to this work. Um and we're working towards water safety for all and water competency for all uh across the country. So again, checking out diversity in aquatics and and what they do. Uh and 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 lastly, recently joined the 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 Board of Directors for the California Water Safety Coalition. Um and we have water polo members uh who have started that uh that work as well. And that Water Safety Coalition is working on the drowning prevention and water safety acts within the state of California. And also the National Water Safety Plan, which is uh supposed to be done in the next several years here. Uh that is a federal mandate uh out of, out of the uh executive branch for all states to create water safety plans in their, in their states. And so for every state, for every state to create a water safety plan, uh how can water polo be a part of that, right? How can water polo be, be uh an active role in this? So a few other organizations that along with USA Water Polo that you can follow and help and support so that we can continue to uh to do this work uh together. Um I'd also like to show you guys a couple of these resources on our website, but I'll take a breath. Brenda, anything um you want to add while uh?
Yeah, you know, listening to, of course, Marco's presentation and some shout, your shout outs you're giving to other organizations has made me think about. I get a lot of members coming up to me and and asking questions, right? And I just want to remind us all, there isn't one model that that fits everyone, right? So it's important to reach out, there's an email that Marco shared. Where, you know, some of us are in this work for the long haul, right? Whether it's through USA Water Polo or not, so please reach out. We understand one model is not going to fit everyone, but we want to work and problem solve and brainstorm with you all. Because we understand the importance of this work. So we're trying, we're doing our best and we know that there's probably other ways that might fit your community. So let's collaborate and make sure that we are sharing um any information that we have within our community.
Yeah, most definitely. Thank you, Brandon, this is, this is a national, obviously movement, but it has international ties and we've received a lot of uh inquiries around this. And so we, we want to be leaders in this space. And um and again, I think the legacy that Brenda is talking about for us individually, we want to see as an, as a sport as a whole, right? That the legacy this leaves for, for everybody moving forward is that this is something that's top of mind. So wa- ways that you can continue to get involved, I'll share my screen once again. Um Monaco mentioned that, please, that the email address, she also mentioned the, the grant program uh that we have. So uh like we talked about again on our website, if you went to about, you'd find diversity, inclusion, you'd be able to find a report. Please again, share widely with everybody, you'd see the links within the final report uh for everything that's happening uh and and the recommendations and the research. Uh if you also on our website, we're to go to programming. Uh so we click on programming and you go to sport developing, uh sport development programming. So I need to do a better job of that. Um. I think it's because I'm on Zoom, but if I go to sport development, there we go. We go to sport development programs and we click on that, you can go straight to the grant development program. So if you click on grant development program, that's going to take you right to the, to the process and where to apply. And you'll see that on a quarterly basis, we're awarding these grants, right? So you can go straight to that and you can see um where you can get all, all of this work. Also on this programming page is all of our splashball materials, right? So anytime we talk about the intro to water polo and using that as as a water competency tool. We have um a splashball manual, the curriculum, skill cards, all these things are available and all this is free and widely available. Anybody can just click and have access to it, so there's no, there's no barriers behind it. So again, if you go to programming and you go to sport development programs, you'll find the splashball, but most importantly, the grant program that we refer to, that we can support. We via the, the generous donations in our D E I Fund, right? Via those generous generations that we have been receiving, we can now reinvest those, the, that money back into the community for people like you. Who are working on this program to mimic the pilot programming uh and with the help and support that um uh that Marco was referring to. So uh with that, um we can, we can take any questions and see, but now you know where the call to action is, you see where we're at after, after all this time. And um again, how much pride and enthusiasm we want to see in terms of lasting the sport. So if there aren't any questions here, uh again, like we talked about, you're watching this on a recording uh or you've seen this online somewhere. We will post this on the website where we had, we'll, we'll, we'll share it in social media again. Um and uh but please send us, engage with us there like Brenda was saying. Um and uh we're happy to answer those questions and keep doing this work with, with everybody um so that we can make the water. Uh available to all via the sport that we all love and know uh so well, so. We appreciate everybody uh coming tonight, uh we appreciate you watching through this. Again, big shout out to the entire task force, again, it's now October of twenty twenty two, we started this uh late in the summer of uh twenty twenty. So two years later, um a lot of work is, and so if you see any of our task force members uh out on the pool decks, as you see there, um I saw in these pictures. Please say hello to them, please give them your gratitude because they put in the work to uh really make sure that our sport uh is open to all. So thank you again, everybody, um good night and we hope to see you on a pool deck soon and we hope to continue to see this work uh flourish. Thank you again.